Everybody on, thanks everybody for coming today. So we're trying to fill in the blanks. We have some people that are gonna help us to give some historic information of what's happened in the past. Maybe help to understand why we're in the situation we're in now and how to progress from here. It's also, I figured, a good opportunity to, you know, help with future communication needs. It's nice to put faces to names, but we're hoping to progress with the tower. It's been an issue in the past and I don't know a lot. So I'll just confess that now, I'm really hoping to gain a lot of information from this. Really just mainly here to kick it off and I just know, I know it's been an issue. I know that there were things not done or done out of order, trying to fill in the blanks a lot. There's some question on where equipment's at, how do we turn the on switch on and so we can utilize that tower? So, you know, a little bit of the history that I know of. You know, we're a newly formed board. We have the main users of our dispatch center involved in the board. And we have hit the ground running, what, late last year was their official start date? So it's been a pretty short amount of time, but honestly very honored to be part of this group and feel like we've made a lot of progress so far and really trying to make sure that our emergency communications are as solid as they can be. But we understand we have a lot of work to do and a lot of cleanup to do too, so.
Do you want to do quick introductions?
Yeah, good idea, let's do, Danny wanna kick us off with some introductions and then we'll get to online at next?
Dan Daly, Fire Chief, Leadville County Fire Rescue.
Yep, and Heath Speckman, Lake County Sheriff and the Chair of E-911.
Claire Skeen, Lake County Emergency Management.
Charles dot E-911 Interim. Probably the last one is the County Sheriff's Office.
Brian Foltz with the State's Office of Public Safety Communications and Supervisor of the Poli Business Service Center.
Rich Mom, Office of Public Safety Communications.
It's new, right?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Michael Irwin, Lake County Public Works Director.
Mabel Bogart, Lake County Public Works and Emergency Service Coordinator.
And then online, if you wanna introduce yourselves to the group, that'd be great.
Dan Brier, Interim PD Chief.
Jeremiah Grant, the Ambulance Director.
Hi, I'm Laura Simmison, Leadville City Administrator.
Andy Driesen, St. Vincent Health.
Lane Feingold, Motorola Solutions.
Doug Leroy, Communications Solutions, Motorola Channel Partner in Colorado Springs.
Yes, thanks everybody, I really appreciate everyone being in this room or virtual right now. This is a really, really good step for future communication needs. Sorry, Claire, you wanna fill in some information for me?
Yeah, so really what, you know, as Sheriff was saying, this is a new E-911 board. We had a lot of staff changeover and this is, this radio tower project is one that's been in the works for many years, right? And I don't want to try to downplay any of the issues that we've had. I recognize there have been issues in communications with holdups, FCC challenges for sure, with staff turnover. But what I'm really hoping for today is that we can come together. I certainly don't wanna be a stopgap of communication. I want the board to be familiar with this project and where we are. I wanna see where we can work together with our partners at the state level and really kinda come up with a plan forward. What are the action items that need to be done? What are the shortfalls that we need to work through from a larger strategic level? Where are we currently at with the FCC? And then what do we need to do to get our new Motorola equipment to replace our failing equipment in dispatch? And that's really my overall goal for the day. I don't know if any other board member has anything to add. But I'm happy to turn it over. Michael Irwin, Mabel, not to put you guys on the spot, but maybe just a quick update and kinda where we are with the FCC, if you were able to get ahold of Heather and all that.
Okay, yeah, so I did get an email back from Heather already. She's working on another email to SWCA who was the subcontractor. The email that was working on the Section 106 stuff, which was environmental. Other stuff from the federal government for the FCC. They just wrapped up and they got the go-ahead for the clearance from the FCC. So we can move forward with the application now as soon as I get that next email with all the information on it. We'll have to be able to tie it to the antenna registration.
Do you have a timeframe?
Application again, there will be a 30-day waiting period for comment from the public or whoever as to whether they think they have the existing tower in the location it's at.
One of the, this is one of those out-of-step steps.
Yeah, it is. We already have the FAA clearance for the tower and it's in its location and it's good. The height is good for airplanes flying into the airport, et cetera. It's not a hazard, even though it's not a lighted tower because it's just the elevation going away from the airport that it's been approved. So that was a big holdup also, is to get that approval from FAA. So the FCC came forward and then the FCC suspended the application and Joe, they got the Section 106 information. And we've been working on that for the last year, so.
So once that, so once we receive that email back from Heather, you can go ahead and submit the application?
Yeah, I can resubmit the application and try to just go through the 30-day waiting period.
Is that immediate, once it's submitted, or do they have additional steps that they have to do before the 30-day?
No, 30 days starts when they're.
As soon as it's submitted, okay. And then we can expect a pretty quick turnaround after the 30 days to get that permit?
Just to clarify a question, what is the second email from Heather for?
Giving me all the clearances and all of the steps that have to tie into the application into the Section 106 stuff that the FCC, or that FCC already has. I just gotta connect that connection between the two files.
And also just to clarify, that resubmission that you're gonna work on, that's the final submission to the ASR now that all the other steps are done?
Yeah.
Alright, so connecting dots, from my understanding, let's say, once that's done, is that where we start talking to you guys again?
So where we need to come in, and the hang-up, just for historical background, the hang-up and why we can't put any equipment on the tower and turn it on is because all of our equipment is licensed and it can't be licensed until they have the ASR. So that's the hang-up. So the other hang-up we also had for pre-installing any other equipment previously last summer was waiting on a CO and electricity, which I believe you have now. You have a CO and you have power.
We have power, I haven't gotten any, anything about a CO, have you? Are we talking certificate of documents?
I believe that it does.
So I think we'll.
I'll have to check with the county department, I'm sure, but I know I have my own section, by the way.
So we need to loop back, because we had some stuff that we could've installed that wasn't waiting on a, on a license, but without power. Couldn't even, didn't even have lights work, so.
Right, okay.
So those are the kinda the two things, the three things we're waiting on, CO, power, and the ASR. So at that point, I think our biggest hang-up is the ASR, knowing that, we've seen, we drove by the tower, we see the power's in.
Yeah.
We sneak around and realize. So I think at that point, it would've been, I don't wanna say we can start talking, we are talking. But I think that's the point where we can start to move forward, because we'll need to reorder equipment. Part of the issue was even the microwave that we were going to install, we have an idea what the license was, or the frequency was probably going to be. Until we have the license, we didn't know. So everything, that's the hang-up on everything, to be honest with you. So for our part, the, so I'm gonna approach this from three different directions, because you kinda have three different things that you're working on and they're all interrelated. So the first one is microwave connectivity to that tower, because without that microwave connectivity to the rest of the system, it's a big paperweight. And that's what everything else is going to key off of. Right now, so every microwave shop has two ends. The other end is up at Hagerman Pass, that part's already installed. We did that when we upgraded the microwave up there last year. So it's already hung, ready to go, we just have to aim the dish once, once you're here. So that's up there, it's just not turned on yet.
Okay.
The other end of the microwave, so the dish and the equipment rack that has the microwave equipment is actually sitting at our shop waiting to be installed. Couldn't install because we didn't have the power and we didn't know what the frequency was. So there's some other steps, other stuff that needs to be reordered though, because it got allocated to a different site once the funding expired for your existing, the site that you put in for the digital trunk radio or DTR site. One of them is a, without getting too detailed, it's a power supply that runs the microwave. That got reallocated to a different site, so that'll need to be reordered. I don't know what the turnaround time on any of this stuff is these days. Basically what that does is it powers all the equipment for us in the shelter and it also provides battery backup, in case the generator doesn't kick or whatever, which that does happen. So all that would need to be installed and one thing we'll need to discuss with you is that pulls two, two different feeds off of a 240 volt, so do you want your electrician to do it? Or do you want us to do it? And we've had counties do it both ways. We are not licensed electricians, but we know how to not kill ourselves. So like in our sites, we do all the work ourselves. But other counties have said that we'd like the electrician to do the pull 40 and we can just say where they have to hook it up, that's a discussion you guys need to have, that's your building. So once we can get power to that and we can put the microwave rack in, once we know what the frequency licenses are for the microwave, we can get that set, which can lead on to the other two projects that, some projects you kinda work on. Number one is putting the DTR radio site in the repeater site, which is what you initially applied for anyway. And like I said, when that funding expired, that equipment got put somewhere else, because we had to use it. So that's what the email from Pam, that she said you would need to, that program is, you can't reapply for it, but you can say, hey, can we move forward and see if we can reorder that equipment? I don't know what the turnaround time for that is either. But that would be the actual radio site that puts in, that would provide the better coverage, which is what started this whole thing we gave it. So that all needs to be reordered, it got reallocated, sent somewhere else. So microwave, good, radio site, good. And then when you move forward with your project to upgrade your consoles to the MCC 7500, that unlike your current dispatch system, which uses console lets and they just talk to the nearest towers, those MCC 7500s have to have a direct connection to the system as well, just like the DTR site will. And that will require, whatever Lake County decides to do, ethernet fiber, microwave here in town, something like that, from wherever those consoles are gonna hear from early, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, to that tower, to the Leadville Tower, jumps on to the microwave that we're putting in and that provides the connectivity. So in addition to your consoles, you'll need to provide connectivity from here to there. And then from there, it's just an ethernet cable between the, between the devices. So that's why I kinda broke it down into three, because one kinda follows the other and then once we get one done, it allows the console project to move forward as well. So like the MCC 7500 consoles can work without a direct connection, but it's an awfully expensive way to do it. But I know that's ultimately what you guys are working towards, is that connectivity and all the features and options that those consoles provide that you can't currently do with your console. Like I know that's what you're working towards. So that microwave is the linchpin after the ASR and then from, so microwave was in place, we can kind of start working towards everything else, so.
I guess, lack of knowledge, what do we need to do still for the ASR, where are we at?
That's what Mike was just talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's the hang-up from our end, besides the power, that's the hang-up for everything. We can't license frequencies or anything until that happens.
So.
And sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. If you guys decide to let anybody else in the tower, wireless internet, cellphone, they can't license anything without the ASR either. That's gonna hang everybody up.
Gotcha, okay.
So if you guys decide to sell tower space for an internet provider, which a lot of counties do, not until that ASR's in.
So one of the questions that's been floating around in my head, and I think Pam addressed this a little bit in her email. So this was, the equipment that was reallocated came off of grant funding, correct?
It's not a grant funding, it was a funding source where counties could put in to ask the state to put the equipment in. But it was never a grant. Basically it was you asking for the state to put DTR equipment in a facility that you provide. But it wasn't a grant, so that funding didn't get pulled, it's just that equipment was state-owned equipment, bought by the state and it was, been sitting, so it had to go somewhere else because the funding, that bill expired, that was a 2018 funding bill, so.
So Pam made it seem like that funding is no longer available.
That program is not, yes.
That program is not. So if we were, once we get through everything, we want to reorder this equipment. Are we looking at taking on this cost ourselves as accounting?
That is the big unknown, my understanding is, and hopefully I'm not taking, stepping on turf, my understanding is we would like to be able to order it and fund it, but that's not guaranteed. Whereas when you apply before, that was a guaranteed project, it was bought and paid for. Now it's gonna have to come out of other funding, other capital funding. So that's an unknown that, and that orbits above me, that's a Pam question. My understanding is the intention is, is if you can get to the finish line, we'd like to go that route. But I don't, but that funding isn't guaranteed at the moment, especially if you roll into the next fiscal year. And I don't, you know, and our fiscal year starts July 1. So that's what I don't know. But I think the intention is to try to get a site here, it helps, and it doesn't just help Lake County responders and help State Patrol and CDOT and everybody else too, so I mean, it helps us as well. But I don't know what your percentage is and likelihoods and all that, other than I think that's the desire is to be able to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know the cost of this equipment, but I can imagine that it's probably outside.
It's more than you want to pay.
It's a small rural county, yeah.
Yes, yes, it's more than you want to pay. My understanding, well, if, just to put it in perspective, if we build a new site and it's tower, billing and everything, then a lot of what you've already done is a million dollars. I think the DTR equipment is sitting somewhere around a quarter of that, but I'm not exact on those numbers, so.
Yeah, that's what I heard too. And then there's a maintenance bit too, to update software or whatnot, that if we buy it, if we bought it, we'd have to maintain that cost also, is that true?
Correct, so for instance, Summit County bought a site and we actually put it in for them, but they're having to maintain it.
That's like an annual cost for the maintenance?
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, I mean, there's not a lot of physical maintenance that goes on, but software updates and things like that.
And Pam's our direct contact for any sort of request to cover those costs? She's the best person to.
Correct, so she's our program manager, so she's the one that would know what the budget looks like and, and things like that. So we're the local techs, we're the ones that would install it, maintain it, whatever, but the, kinda the administrative and intergovernmental stuff, that's Pam.
Okay.
So we're just the guys that put it in and take care of it. And we're your local contact.
But what we are trying to do, are we taking on the maintenance there or is that something?
That depends on who buys the equipment. Yeah, so if, if, if we can, so if the state buys the equipment, then, now, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a gray area of your question there. There are some entities that have bought the equipment, but we're maintaining it under MOU. For instance, Bureau of Rec owns the DTR sites at Brandon and Hagerman, we're taking care of it under an MOU. So there's, there's two and a half answers there, so.
And then I guess my other question was, if we do get more funding, is the, cause this was like temporary funding and it ended, right? So I guess my question is, if our funding was to ever end, do we then have to take on the cost?
Those are questions, that's Pam's question, yeah. And there's, there's always moving pieces, some of the sites have started off as county sites and we've taken over, others have gone the other way. Most counties, when they see the maintenance costs, they usually try to push it off on us and, and most of them end up in our pocket. So.
And sorry, this was already answered, do we have a ballpark for those maintenance costs?
I don't know, I don't know. If you ended up having to buy your equipment yourself, I can put you in touch with the Summit County Radiotech. They just, when did we put that site in, two years ago? Yeah, so he, they bought and are maintaining a site fairly recently. I, I don't know what those costs look like, so.
So for some of the technical things you mentioned, like what needs to be reordered, the direct connection process, that's all over my understanding, who do we talk to about getting that set up to make sure we're not missing any, any steps there?
I would, my professional advice is to try to roll that in into your console project, because they're gonna have, those two pieces are gonna have to talk to each other. So without recommending a vendor, it makes sense to roll it into one project, because otherwise, they're just two standalone things.
Yeah, maybe Doug or Lane, if you wanna chime in on that part, on how you can be helpful for us to understand those next steps, once we get our ASR in place and we need to order more equipment, or reorder some of that state equipment and then also the direct connection process, how can you help us with that?
So from the perspective of the site equipment, whether you or the state was to reorder, we'd work with Ed Boyer, Ed Boyer from the state and verify that we had the proper equipment list and get it ready to go. So they would just help verify, we'd have our engineers put it together and then have them verify all looks good from his perspective for the state and how they do their sites. So we can get that put together fairly quickly. From the direct connect perspective, so connecting from your dispatch center to the, the new RF site that you've been discussing to put up, you would need some type of direct connect there and you could talk to Lumen, you could work with Doug potentially, I don't wanna speak for Doug, maybe he can comment to that, you know, or, or there's other vendors as well. But yeah, that direct connect piece, if you wanted us to help you with it Motorola, we could, but you probably save some money on that piece going through someone directly who could provide that for you, to be honest.
And there's a couple ways to crack that nut, I mean, it's, it's basically an internet connection that's private. So as many ways as you can get internet, there's ways to do that. That's, it's gonna be a discussion a lot to have with your vendors, so.
Yeah, I wonder since we have a recent fiber project rolling through our community, if there's a way to tap into what the work they've already done, maybe?
Doug, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, just kinda doubling up with that, that's beyond my scope, so that would be, be the providers that you have there.
Yeah, so some counties have their own private microwave, some of them have fiber, there's a couple ways to crack that nut. The nice thing is if you do microwave, as long as the Leadville Tower can see here and wherever your new dispatch center site is, all you have to do is point it in a different direction and you have that connection again. So that, that might be something long-term to think about, because leasing of fibers, that's a monthly cost. A microwave is a one-time cost, minus NADAs.
Excuse my ignorance, but the microwave is that, so that's not the direct connection, that would just be?
That's two dishes running at each other, yeah, line of sight. So I, I would love to see if you have line of sight between you and their.
Okay, we know where, if we end up with a new dispatch, we know where it would be. I imagine that would require some sort of tower also, if we're talking microwave, so that would be part of the cost considerations?
Probably.
For the construction, yeah.
Yeah, every dispatch center we have already has its own tower of some sort, small, smaller bay, depends.
Yeah, location.
Well, with the Justice Center, then you would have to go through FAA again, because you're not trying to.
Yeah, I imagine we'd have to go through the whole.
So me and Doug talked about that too and that wouldn't really work.
No, so we're thinking more of the direct connection to the fiber or something, but it would be a monthly cost.
Yeah, some of the dispatch centers have a fiber connection from the nearest. I'll call it a head-end point, where our network ends at the Leadville Tower by your building to wherever you need to go. And that's the last, that's the last mile that you'll need to solve as part of your console project, so.
And so Lane, you were mentioning for that project, that Lumen was one of the contractor, or one of the private companies that we would talk to about that project?
You, you could, yeah, they, I mean, they, if, and I don't know, some folks up there might have a better idea if that's something Lumen can provide up there or not, but at least in a lot of areas in Colorado, they can help with that, they're a possibility for sure.
One thing I would caution you on is if you decide to do, there's something, there's called licensed microwave, which is what we work in, and there's unlicensed microwave, which is you can literally buy a microwave and hang it wherever, but there's no licenses, so some counties, and I won't mention them in this area, have tried to go that route to save some money and burned them in the end, because as soon as somebody else put them up with a microwave in the area, they dropped that day. So I would definitely steer you away from anything unlicensed, I know it's cheaper, but.
I would definitely agree with that statement, most definitely.
Okay.
I know it's cheaper, a lot cheaper, but.
That's just the microwave world?
Yeah.
Just kinda brainstorming here, is would our IT be able at all to connect the fiber connection from here to the tower?
Possibly, yeah, I mean, fiber is a standard way to carry internet, that's all we're doing, is carry basically IP traffic. So your IT department might be a good resource for that as well.
I know you're kinda careful with providers and vendors and whatnot, but we just don't know where to start really, so I know it's.
I don't know, you're already wound up to tell ya, but your IT folks are, yeah, but they would know.
That's helpful though. Just do your story.
Do you think they would be a good option, because they're already a vendor approved by CBI? And CBI's pretty strict.
Probably.
Okay, they have to be vetted, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, that's, and again, and as much as you wanna save money, because it's your money, this is not a fly-by-night thing you wanna go with. You don't wanna have Joe Bob's ISP.
One thing, if we try to save money now, cut a corner, we're gonna end up spending more money in the end, trying to fix it to get it right.
Yeah, in an emergency.
Yeah, in an emergency.
On the Friday after Thanksgiving, because that's when the other county stuff dropped. So, yeah, so. So yeah, so that's, that's kinda why I described it as three different projects, you know, we'll get to the, I keep on calling it the Leadville Tower, because that's what we call it. But, you know, that's where our connection will land, and so wherever you have your consoles here or when you move, that connection will be Lake County's responsibility.
And a question for you guys with the comment made about the electrical work, whether they do it or we have our own electricians do the work to the tower for the 248 power, is that correct?
So 240 volt power. So within, and that's just within the building, your existing building, pulling from the existing panel. I mean, you're talking like a couple hours.
Okay, is that something that you guys would know one way or the other? Do you prefer like to represent the county's decision to whether to hire our own electrician to do it or just have the state do it? Yeah, so that's the easy, yeah, that seems like the easiest, right?
Yeah, we can do it to our specs, because we'll have to pull additional outlets for the, the DTR repeaters as well.
Would there be a way to, since we know that we're back on this project and we're gonna move forward with it, would it be a way to try to order the equipment now, because we don't know what the delay would be for that?
That's a Pam question. All, all that policy forward planning stuff, that's Pete, Pete Bangus and Pam Montes.
So Lane, maybe you can start working on that list of what's needed?
Yeah, we kind of have a standard configuration, even when other counties buy their own stuff, they go off of our list. It comes in one rack, we put it in bolted down.
Yeah, we, we just need to have an engineer verify that it had all the latest and greatest parts and everything, but yeah, we can put that together. I assume, I assume it's a six-channel site?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so we can start getting that put together and then we'll run everything by Ed or maybe talk to Ed first, just so we're not spinning our wheels on something we don't need to be and make sure we get you an accurate list.
That'd be great, Lane, if we can at least get that process going in anticipation for the ASR.
Yeah, that's, that's an Ed, Pam and Pete thing.
I mean, just, just industry standard, does anybody know kind of what that timeframe would be on the manufacturing and the?
Lane would know.
Right, right now, we're probably looking at about six months or so, based on just where we're at with our backorder and supply chain. But hopefully we could draw on a little bit sooner, but we're, to be conservative, probably talking about six months.
So I'm gonna do, I'm gonna give you a good news, bad news kinda thing. The bad news is it takes six months for that radio equipment to come in. The good news is if we can get the other microwave dish hung on the tower before the end of summer, we can do all the work on the Leadville Tower for the radio site year-round. But if we can't get the dish on the new tower facing Hagerman, aimed before I can't get to Hagerman anymore, then it's next summer.
Got it, okay.
We have, we have to be able to get to the far end of Hagerman, so.
Yeah, so.
So that's a good news, bad news kinda thing.
Good to know, yeah, thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
It's good to know.
And like I said, that microwave equipment is sitting in our shop, ready to install. So anytime between about, whenever Hagerman opens up, mid-July or whatever, and it gets closed in August or October or other, if we can get the microwave shop working in that timeframe, then everything else we can do year-round, we just have to pick a nice day to hang the antennas where the wind isn't blowing sideways and take that.
And you guys just need the ASR number to do that.
And then confirming the CO and the power.
We just, yeah, uh, everyone was able to.
Okay, so yeah, then at this point, everything hinges on that ASR. No, no pressure.
Not paying any pressures, I figure.
So yeah, so that's kinda the good news, is if we can get that other work done in the summertime, then whenever the Motorola equipment shows up, even if it's in January, you know, and, you know, we can, we can do it.
Okay. I appreciate all that, I think, also one question I wanted to review is just to keep some positive communication relationships going, is let's say if we get our project done this summer, we're able to install everything, what do you guys need from us going onward with maintenance-related stuff?
So I need to clarify, but I believe the project was supposed to go with a generator. And I don't remember, that's another Pam question, is who's responsible for the generator maintenance? The HVAC maintenance would be on Lake County, because it's your building. And then for us, the biggest thing is 24/7 access. Either we have a key or a combo, or we know how to very quickly get to a key or combo, say at the dispatch center or something like that, we have to have 24/7 access. Any outages we do, and you guys know, we always email before we cut a site. We try to let you know several days in advance, and if you have a big event going, we'll reschedule, it's not a big deal. So our biggest thing is just communicating that with you guys, and I think we have a pretty good, you get my emails.
I think.
Well, I know, I know you guys do. And then making sure we have 24/7 access, I, I don't remember. And then making sure we have twenty-four seven access, and I, I don't remember, I know HVAC is on the county, the radio equipment, that's the two and a half answers I was giving you. And then the generator, I don't remember who's responsible for that, and that's a Pam question.
Um, dispatch does have access code to the cache, which is the building that the tower, uh.
Yeah, there's the building inside though, that's what we need access to, cause it's such a challenge.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
And then the only other requirement that we have is that if you decide to let a commercial vendor on there for cell service, internet provider, something like that, um, and that's, and this is another Pam question, but I can tell you right now, we, either we either have to wall off our equipment, or something like that, or the people that are going in there have to have a, um, a background check, things like that, so that is, that has become an issue with some other counties. Or that vendor, they can get on the tower all they want, but they have to build their own little shelter outside, we've seen some counties do that, so that's, that's gonna be just, if you decide to lease the space on the tower, which I know at one point was the idea, we do have some separation requirements because of the critical nature of our stuff.
Um, we have the generator up to the cache right now, does that cover that tower as well, now?
I.
Is there a generator up there for the tower?
I believe there's, I, Pam can answer this correctly, but I'm about ninety percent sure that we are supposed to provide the generator. I know in other projects we've done with that same funding source, we provided the generator, hooked it up and all that. Um, but again, that's, because that, that program is gone, that's a Pam discussion.
Yeah, so I will reach out to Pam and clarify the status of that generator, cause we just have the one that hooks up to the building, but we don't have one that hooks up to the.
Yeah, I, well, I know we have a place to, so. Um, and that's a fairly sizable generator, I think we're ordering twenty-five kilowatt generators now, so. So if we're responsible for generator maintenance, then we also get in and do the PMs on that and stuff like that as well. We have our own generator, guys that come up and do that, so. So biggest thing then also is, for the HVAC, if that stuff fails, we know it almost immediately, cause this room skips about a hundred degrees in about half an hour. So, you know, just calling dispatch and say, hey, so that they know who to call when the HVAC is gonna fail, and they just do. So they know who to call in the overnight, because it's always on a Friday night on a holiday weekend, yeah, so.
And the county's also required to purchase the HVAC equipment?
It's already in there.
Oh.
So as long as it works, which, you know, I mean, I'm assuming it did, but it came with, that, it came with wall mounting track, yeah.
We'll probably need to put it on our, um, contracts. Okay. To maintain it over here.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, again, that's assuming that the state ends up buying the generator and things like that, so that's, that's Pam question.
Sounds like Pam's about to get a long email.
She gets a lot of those, a lot of us too, cause I'm like, what the hell? Cause I can't remember what the agreements are half the time either. We have some sites where we own the tower, but the county owns the building or vice versa.
Oh, really? Um, I can't think of any more questions, or anybody else? I was trying to think if I had any. That clears a lot of things up for me, but anybody online have any questions?
None for me?
Nope. Emails. The room questions?
So I think for us, the biggest takeaways are, are, um, yeah, just send me a copy of that CO, if you would please scan it, email it, and I'll send it to Pam.
Okay.
Um, cause they wouldn't give you any of the CO without power.
Yeah.
Um, and then, yeah, that ASR, um, is really gonna be kind of our green light for whatever the agreement ends up being. Um, because, you know, we have to program frequencies, before we can put it in, et cetera, et cetera, so that's kinda beginning to where we hang up, and then um, finding out from, um, our headquarters between you guys, what the ultimate plan is, um, so.
Okay, yeah, maybe, yeah, I have a lot more knowledge on this now, just in that brief amount of time, so I really appreciate you guys coming down, and it was very helpful.
Absolutely, no, we'd love to come up.
Yeah.
More on, to be honest.
I do have a question, um, I sent you and Claire a copy of the invoice for the air conditioning unit
Okay.
for the electrical. Is E nine-one-one paying it, or?
Yeah, I don't think we've finished that conversation on it.
Yeah.
So we haven't submitted anything?
No, we haven't.
Um, I'll, we'll figure that out.
Okay.
I don't think that was discussed initially, cause it was an additional cost. We're talking about discussed stuff here, now that's that separate, yeah.
So where are you, so for our know, know, excuse me, I haven't had a company, for our knowledge, where are you guys with your console project? For the seventy-five hundreds?
For we know this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this is kind of, uh, where we're learning is, we need this in place before we can, and, and Lane, did you hear that question?
Yeah, yeah, so from the project perspective, we'll be kicking it off pretty soon, but yeah, we obviously need the link between the dispatch center and the, uh, and, and the RF site, and then obviously the site, the, the dish on the other side of Hagerman to that site, up and running before they can, uh, get the direct connect, so.
So realistically, um, so that's good to know that your installation is imminent, realistically, we won't be able to get that microwave in operation till later when the password opens, so you guys know when that is.
Yeah.
Um, or are you basically digging out? Like I said, the equipment's already hung up there, we just gotta have somebody up there aiming the dish. So we're looking at. Yeah, so you're looking at summertime before, you're looking at summertime before we can get our microwave in operation, assuming everything else holds in place, so.
And timing wise, that, that's totally fine from our perspective, as far as that project, so, um, if that can happen, I understand there's some variables there, that would work out great from our perspective.
Okay.
Well, we understand what we need to do, so it's like a whole lot of conversation with Pam, and then prioritizing these needs, right?
Yeah, if you guys wanna set up a video call with Pam, and, and we can jump on as well.
Okay.
And I like to call it translating between user and headquarters.
Right. Perfect. Yeah, it's helpful, I, yeah, yeah, you know. What, you guys anything for us?
No, this has been really good, there was some definite hiccups along the way, and this is definitely a good thing, and we're glad to help, we're on, we wanna get the site in too. But, you know, there's just been some sort of things like that, which we're more than happy to work past.
Yeah, and I appreciate you guys sticking with it, and, you know, we're on a good track now.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it is, yeah, the motivation's there, at least, maybe not the technical knowledge, so what we're learning as we go, so. If, if we ask the same question twice, it's probably because we just have a lack of understanding of how the technical side works.
If it makes you feel any better, the reason I am in this position was about twenty years ago, I was a cop and my radio been working with.
Gotcha.
I wanted to know why, and now here I am, so.
I'll stop asking questions.
See your future.
Right, I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah.
The technical stuff is like, right, no, it's cool, I appreciate your efforts, and again, sticking with us, and, uh, we'll make some good steps.
Yeah, no, this, this is, um, I think we each have a path forward, and we each kind of have what the other one is waiting on.
Okay, yeah, no, thanks again. All right.
Well, guys, as, just as a reminder, always call us if you guys have weird, random things going on. Our preference is that they all go through, say dispatch, instead of us getting calls from six different agencies. But yeah, if something's being hinky, give us a call, we'll figure it out, so.
Sounds good, yeah, it's helpful with the board, having all the users, is, we, you, you won't, you won't get that from us, you know?
Yeah.
We're all involved with each other, and we can just go, uh, with the one person calling us.
Yeah, that makes our job easier.
Yeah, so, okay, good to know, though. All right, well, shut it down, thanks, guys, I appreciate your time.
Thank you everyone online for joining.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Um, I know that you guys do, and Claire does, and I believe Sheriff does.
Yeah, can I be added to that, you know, change?
Yeah, I'll, I, that's, that's. And we don't have cards, because we're not, they don't trust us to talk for public, so. If you know who we are, you know who we are, so.
Right.